Be with me, people, just one second. I'm looking for taxation hearing agenda.
It's on the other side of the...
Got it, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the taxation hearing agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Funderburg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda is budget... Is budget hearing? I'm sorry, six zero. I'll change that for the minutes, please. On the approval of agenda. Okay, the next item is budget hearing. And I believe that's where Dr. Mensah?
The budget as we saw during the study session is based on the alignment with the debt, the deficit elimination plan. And there is no change in millage, in the budget. Millage rates will remain the same as they were last year. However, due to the amendment of PA 437, each school district is required to recalculate its debt service millage in July and August. In July, we will receive our annual loan activity report and application. And we are required to recalculate the millage levy necessary to pay off the debts. This is new. The law, the amendment became effective in 2013. So this is the first time that we are going to recalculate our millage. And we are required to do it every year. So from now onward, every year, we will recalculate our debt service millage. So although all the millage is remained the same, the debt service may go up. Now, our financial advisers have advised us that the millage is most likely to go up because our property tax base has come down. Now, back in 2009 or 2008, the property tax base was 1.3 billion. It has come down to 870,000, 870 million. Now, the school district has levied 7.0 mills on debt service. That's a minimum. The maximum is 13. However, the school district cannot continue levying 7.0 mills because if it that so, it will not be able to repay the loans. So the financial advisers, so the batch, have advised that the millage rate should go up. And according to their preliminary calculations, they are saying that the rate may go up to 8.25. But we will not know for sure until we receive our annual loan activity application in July. At this particular time, the millage rates as they are now have already gone into print by the city of Romulus. So this resolution will apply to the millage as of now. But once we know for sure what the new rates are going to be, then there will have to be another resolution. Now, the financial advisers are willing to come to the next board meeting and take questions from the board and the public as to the requirements of the new, of the amended PA 437. So in other words, what I'm saying is that although the millage rates as of today are the same as in the past, they are likely to go up in July. Is that clear or confusing?
Only the debt service though.
Only the debt service.
That's the only one that will raise?
Yes, only the debt service will go up.
The remainder will stay the same?
The rest will stay the same.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
In regards to the letter that went out for to an elected official? I'm just trying to find out, when you say that it may raise, is that what was meant in the letter? Or was it, because I'm reading what was said as authorizing and directing monies to be raised by taxation for the purpose of said school districts in the summer and winter. So I'm trying to understand, when you say raise there, was it, were you saying just a combination of both of them?
Actually, that letter went out
Okay.
before we were advised that the debt service millage would go up. That letter specifically addresses the collection of the levy. As of now, we collect levy twice, winter, summer.
Okay.
Come July 2015, there will be only one collection. I think that is what the letter was trying to address.
Okay.
Okay, but the letter did not address what I'm saying now.
Okay, because, okay, so can you clear up to me then? In the second paragraph of that letter, it says, "As duly authorized representative of said school districts, we hereby certify that the tax request tax levy rates have been reduced, if necessary, in compliance with section 31 of Article 9 of the state constitution." Can you explain to me then?
Well, that, well...
That if it's going ra, if it's, why does one say and the other one is saying that it's been reduced?
I think that's just standard language in the law that requires. When you, when you look at the 4029, when you look at the 4029.
Okay.
You find that...
Give me a second to grab that.
That's the form, it's attached all to the same thing.
Okay.
When you look at... 4029.
Okay.
You find that there is something called fraction, rollback fraction.
Okay.
If that fraction changes, that fraction changes, we have to change the millage.
Okay.
And reduce it accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, if it changes below one, let me put it that way. Right now, it's been steady at one for us. Okay, for some other taxing authorities, the rate may change to below one. Okay, in that case, they are required to
Okay.
reduce their rates in order to be in compliance with the law. But that does not affect it. That is simply language in the law that we have to state.
Okay.
That we reduce it.
Okay.
Now, what I'm talking about is, look at column four. You see 7.0 there for debt service. That is the one I'm talking about, okay? In the past, as I said, our property tax base was 1.3 billion. Levying at 7.0 will pay off the debts, no problem. Now, the tax base has fallen to 870 million. So if we continue levying at 7.0, we will not be able to repay all the debts. And currently, we borrow from the bond fund, from the state. Now, we have to prove to them that our millage rate can enable us pay off the debt before we borrow from them.
Okay.
And as I said, our financial advisers are saying that because our property tax base has declined, the 7.0 will not do it. That's why they are saying that 8.25 will do it. Now, as we all know and would like to wish, property values have started going up since probably a year or so ago. Now, if next year, our property tax base goes up, the millage will come down. So now, every year, we have to do a calculation. We either have to raise the levy on the debt service, or we may lower it, the period of point that changes in our property tax base.
Question, so we have to do this every year?
Every year.
Will it happen at the same time in July?
The same time, the same time.
So...
Okay, next year, we may do it in June.
Okay, then that was the reason why I was, I guess what I'm getting at is we have the truth in taxation hearing for the general public. And so this is like a timely expectation for them. And I would hope that at some point, we can get them together as opposed to we do one thing here and then later we go back and change it. So once we're not confusing ourselves, but then if we're confused on the board, then the community probably have some of the same things going on with them. So just to kind of...
My hope is that next year, we'll do it in June.
Okay, the truth in taxation or the loan?
Both of them.
Okay, all of it together?
Yeah, we do them in June. Now, one clarification is that the law says clearly that the district must levy whatever is necessary
To pay back the debt.
According to the new law, to pay the debt. So it is not a situation where even if we vote it down, we can get away with it. Even if we vote it down, the law says we must levy whatever is necessary.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a situation where, yes, you have to take a vote on it.
Right.
But at the same time, you are mandated to do it.
Right, it's common circumstance at that point. Yes.
Okay, so this only affects Romulus taxes, not Inkster, even though there's a section of Inkster that's...
It affects the school, anybody that pays the school tax.
I understand Inkster taxes will be collected for us by the wind racer.
But the ones in Inkster that pay, would pay us, are the ones that are in the Romulus School District of Inkster.
Yeah.
Right, so they are affected by this too. They're, if you live in Inkster and you're in the Romulus corridor that belongs to us, you're going to pay the same rate that I'm paying, that everybody else on this table is paying. So there's no, if you own a home, that's what you're going to pay.
Right.
You're not getting any break or nothing like that.
Okay, are there any more questions from the board?
And you said the max is out at 13 mills?
That's a max.
Maximum?
The debt service has a max. The minimum is seven, the max is 13. We are currently levying the minimum.
And the financial advisers are saying we need to go to 8.25 so we can pay off the debt in the allotted time that was prescribed when it first came out.
And if the board would like them to appear at the next meeting, they are willing to do so, to answer questions.
That might be a good idea, Madam Chair, to have them just in case people do have questions.
Yes, yeah, I think we should do that.
Dr. Mensah, this is why we're on this form. John Thede needs to be changed to my name, Dante Bottom. Because he's not the secretary anymore.
Okay, you are the secretary now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think everybody keeps confusing that, they don't know who's who, so...
People get them mixed up all the time when they walk down the street.
So just so that I'm clear, nothing else has been, nothing has been reduced? None, none of the taxes have been reduced, right? Okay.
Stay in the same, except when next month it comes out, it's going to go up.
I do have another question, and I think this kind of goes back prior to you. So maybe Ms. Peck may be able to answer this. But about a year ago this time, we were having a conversation at this table in regards to our at-risk funding versus our hold harmless funding. So I guess my question would be, how, as far as our numbers are concerned, are we fine with our at-risk numbers? Because I know a lot of times, if anything shifts, shifts on those at-risk numbers, it jeopardizes us in securing that funding. And at some point, I know for myself, I was kind of contemplating, you know, do we just go ahead and assess the hold harmless millage? Or do we do the at-risk funding? Because I really kind of feel like sometimes that the at-risk funding is at risk of being taken if our numbers aren't in compliance. And I know when Mr. McLaughlin was on the board, he worked very closely with our legislation to make sure that they put some things in place to change that so that we wouldn't have to pay back the money. So are we fine in those numbers? And do we foresee any change whatsoever as far as the hold harmless versus the at-risk funding?
Well, I think about two years ago, we levied 1.974. And they claimed that was too high.
Right.
Okay. When I came in, I was told that we overlevied about 82,000 and we should return the money to the taxpayers.
Right.
However, they were unable to prove that we still owe the taxpayers the money simply because we had a rate of 1.974. It came down to 1.3137. That's a substantial decrease. At the same time, our student numbers went up. So I asked them, given those changes in the variables, okay, how do you prove that we still overlevied $82,000? Finally, they somehow agreed that we don't have to, well, we don't, we haven't overleveled. The overlevy was about two years ago, which we corrected. Okay, now, I understand your concern. At the current rate, 1.3, I think is very low for us to really run the risk of overlevy.
Okay.
So when our student numbers drop, then we have to take a closer look at it.
Okay.
And see, because it's mainly driven by number one, property values, and number two, student numbers. Okay? I think student numbers are more critical to the calculation.
Okay.
So if our student numbers don't drop significantly, I believe the current rate is a good rate.
Okay.
Until we see changes to the numbers. But again, it needs to be monitored.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions? Okay. Next item on the agenda is communications and expressions from the public in regards to the taxation hearing. Do I have anybody that wants to speak? Okay, then that takes us to adjournment. Do I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion to be adjourned from taxation hearing.
Support.
Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Funderburg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Taxation hearing is adjourned at 6:07. I'd like to call our regular meeting of June 23, 2014, to order. For the record, roll call again, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Kudrick?
Present.
Ms. Bowles?
Here.
Ms. Crowe?
Here.
Mr. Thede is absent, excuse. Ms. Funderburg?
Here.
Ms. Beer?
Here.
Ms. Buckley is here.
I guess we'll rise again for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be called and acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the reported superintendent portion of the agenda. Item A is approval to approve the minutes of the Board of Education of the regular meeting of June 9, 2014, and special meeting of June 16, 2014. Item B, approval to approve the personnel actions as submitted by Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resources. Resignation of Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resources. Item C, approval to approve the bills for payment as submitted by Dr. Vincent Mensah in the amount of $491,521.75. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Discussion.
Support.
Who is the, that was Crowe. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Kraut. Discussion, Ms. Bowles?
Um, just a couple corrections I saw in the minutes. The first one is on June 9. At the bottom of the, well, actually, if you look at the top, it's a, I see some typos at the top with the 2014. And then I looked further down, approval of consent agenda.
It's on the 9th?
Yep, on the 9th. And then if you look at the approval of consent agenda, the minute minutes, the amended minutes of the special meeting of May 19, 2014, to reflect change in vote, there wasn't a change in a vote, it was incorrectly noted. So I'm trying to see if there's a way we can say a correction in vote instead of that.
I'm trying to see where I see that at.
Approval of consent agenda? 61411.
She's talking about item, the, in the moved?
Yes.
Right, she wants to see correction instead of the word change.
So you want the word change taken out and put correction?
Right.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
And then on the second page of that, which would be 61417, under superintendent contract, we have the a's listed, we have the nays listed, but we don't have the names of the person that voted as a nay vote, as we do in all the other ones that we have voted.
Which one was that, Ms. Bowles?
That's the 61417.
Okay.
And then I also saw in June 16, 2014, special minutes. June 16, 2014, special minutes? Okay, it could be just a correction that's noted in regards to the $113,463 for the 2014, 2015 school year as the amount of the budget with surplus revenue. When we had our meeting, it was discussed that the fund balance was, we were subtracting fund balance of $6,452, which would have left a balance of $107,011. So I'm just letting you know that as well.
Should that be a correction?
Yes.
I mean, in the dollar amount?
Yes, given, given what was calculated before the meeting.
So what was it, 107, 611?
111.
Okay.
107 or 111.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Was there anything else?
Nope, those were the only one I saw.
Okay, Ms. Funderburg?
I'm sorry, I didn't get to the secretary before, June 9. We have down near the bottom for adjournment. A, 7, nay, 0. It would be 6, 0, because...
Which one?
For, I'm sorry, it would be...
Right.
Go back to the top. It's our June 9 meeting.
Right, because Ms. Bowles left.
Yeah, she...
Right.
And which one?
So it should be 6, 0 for adjournment.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So 6, 0, and then for our special meeting, for adjournment, it's just flip Funderburg, Kudrick, as opposed to Kudrick, Funderburg, for adjournment. And that's it?
Okay.
16, sorry.
No, it should read move by Funderburg.
16?
All right, now get those all turned in and get them corrected.
You got them too recently?
Yeah, and Mrs. McAnally wrote them down too, so... So we have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Kraut, with corrections from Ms. Bowles and Mrs. Funderburg. So can I have a vote to accept the amended consent agenda?
I wasn't here.
Do we have something else?
I don't think you were here. Were you here? I don't think you were here.
Were you here?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I was here. I don't think she was here.
Which day?
No, right here, excuse Kraut, I was in here.
Right, but then there are six of us here?
Excuse me.
What day is that?
Is it 16?
They're checking. We're checking, I'm sorry. Sandy hit it.
Yeah, she's not on roll call.
There should be 5, 0.
No, she wasn't here.
She wasn't here. So the vote should be 5.
Well, which one?
Actually...
For special meeting?
Yeah.
So then 5, 0.
On the minutes for June 16. Right here.
Was John here?
She was excused.
Yes, John was here.
John was here, that's what I'm saying, it was six of us here.
So it was six of us. Needs to show that Thede was here.
He came in late.
He came in late.
But it doesn't show what time he came in.
Okay, so it should be 6, 0.
It should be 6, but...
Okay.
John came in.
So we need to vote that Mr. Thede arrived at, do you have a time? Did we write the time down?
I gave my notes.
Okay, I'll get that added to the notes, so...
I wrote it down when you came in.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Came in right after you started.
Yes, so I have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Kraut, with corrections by Ms. Bowles, Ms. Funderburg.
And Ms. Kraut.
And Mrs. Kraut. And Mrs. Kraut. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. The next item on our agenda is reported the superintendent.
The student hearing expulsion appeal decision, we need a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr.?
Move the Board of Education incur with the decision of the superintendent, deny the appeal request for student two zero zero two four four six.
Comment? Just wanted, uh, let it be known.
Wait, wait, let, let's go. Gotta get, gotta get support first.
You support, Danielle?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Fundenberg, Ms. Bowles?
Okay. I just want to make it known that I wasn't there in that one, so therefore, um, I will not be able to make a judgment one way or the other on this one.
Okay. So you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Fundenberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstain? Okay, so five, one. Actually, five, zero, one.
The next item on the board, or on our agenda, is our new high school principal, and I'm excited because he's in the audience tonight, and I'm gonna have Ms. Peck introduce him.
If, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'd like to prime the pump a little bit before we invite him up.
Sure.
So you can look out in the audience with, with eager anticipation. Mr. Flynnoya Hall, the third, goes by Flynn. He comes to us as a graduate from Saginaw Valley State University with both the bachelor's, master of education, and education specialist in central office administration super tendency. He has worked as an assistant principal at Henry Ford High School. He's been the high school principal at Highland Park when they went through their most recent changes, um, and they moved to, uh, an outsourced, if you will, high school program. He was also in Saginaw for many years as a principal of a pre-K through ninth grade program, as well as moved into district instructional and testing and assessment and accountability coordination for the district of Saginaw. He also has on his, his, um, very impressive resume, he worked for Delta College for a number of years. Um, he was a head basketball coach, he was a counselor, an academic advisor, and assistant athletic director for Delta College, and, um, he was also a professional basketball player at the European Professional Basketball Association. He was! And when you stand up, you're missing that.
I know, right?
I'm very happy to present to the Board of Education, Mr. Flynnoya Hall. Mr. Hall, could you step forward? And dazzle them like you dazzled all of us.
It's a microphone right here on the end. And if you just flick, think it's the top switch?
The kids will certainly see you coming.
Mr. Hall, let me, let me take, finish this, um, motion, and then we'll let him speak.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Education to accept the appointment of Flynnoya Hall, the third, as principal of Rymlis High School for Rymlis Community Schools for a two hundred and twenty-five day contract effective July one, two thousand and fourteen. I hope I didn't ruin that first name.
Support.
Who's supporting, Sandy or Danielle?
I think it's Sandy.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Kraut.
Comment?
Discussion, Ms. Bowles?
I just want to make it known, I just received this just a few minutes ago. I didn't get a chance to really look over anything, so I'm gonna abstain on this one as well, too.
Okay, um, so I have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Kraut. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have one abstain. Motion carries five, zero, one. Okay, Mr. Hall.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I don't believe I would need this.
Yeah, you need it.
Actually, for our viewers.
Top button, top button. Yeah, it's top button.
Yeah, sometimes it gets a little...
Batteries probably do.
Steve!
Snickety.
He's laughing.
Earth to Steve, we need batteries.
You know what, could you flip?
Here you go.
We'll use that last mic there.
Use this one, sir.
He's fixing it.
He's laughing.
I know, right? I know, right?
I heard you.
You could do like Pictionary. Sounds like?
It's working now?
Steve?
All right, all right, I know who to...
You can call Steve, you'll get two of them, so you better be sure, Steve, Steve.
Right.
Okay, okay. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
First of all, indeed, it's an honor and a privilege to stand before you on this evening. Um, and I want to thank the Board and the entire hiring committee for those rounds of interviews. Uh, very enlightening, very enlightening. Um, I mean, you heard what Ms. Peck, you know, said in regards to, you know, some of the things that are on my resume, but I have to be honest with you, ladies and gentlemen, I come from an approach of, uh, being a servant, okay? Uh, I started off my professional education career in higher education, and although it was fulfilling, uh, it did not meet my, my personal needs, okay? I'm, I grew up in the down river area here, and, uh, if it had not been for teachers, counselors, and coaches, I would not be standing before you. And so, as an administrator in higher education, uh, there was a, a, a huge void that was left there. And so I made, I made the crazy decision as being the associate, uh, uh, director of enrollment management at Delta College with over fourteen thousand students, and being pretty young at that time, uh, to, to dive into K, K through twelve, because I wanted to be an influence, just like others were an influence in my life. And so that's why I stand here before you. That's why, uh, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity here with the Rumbly, Rumbly's Community School District. And, and as I shared with Sean earlier, I think that we are about to do some awesome things. And so, uh, I'm not, not much of a talker, okay? Uh, but I, I think that, uh, it's about, about doing. It's about doing. And so hopefully, I can stand here, uh, twelve months from now, uh, giving you an annual report, and, uh, you all can say, irregardless, once again, of, of how tall he is, how great of a basketball player he was, or, or, or whatever it may be, uh, he's one heck of an instructional leader. And so, uh, when it's all said and done, uh, that's, that's, that's what I want to be saying about me. And, and, and even more than that, how much, uh, I have a genuine care for our young people. And so, once again, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to, uh, to stand before you on today. Uh, but now, it, it, it's time to get to work. It's time to get to work, so thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We're excited to have you. The next item is Curtis Carter, and he's sitting right there. Our performance contract update, this was for the energy, um, bond that we were looking at, so we, um, contracted with Curtis's company to keep us on track and in line. See what Steve has.
I think I can get that on the, get it on the flash drive.
Yeah, same studio. Yes, thank you.
You're earning your money today. Don't make this a habit, Steve. We keep you in that room for a reason.
I know, just a little bit of a dinosaur. Who's like that? And that's what I was gonna say, T L C. Gretchen. Gotta, you have to hard do it. Might turn off at some point. I just want the Board to know that we are, um, in the process right now of doing a Windows update on our district systems. And, um, we're very hopeful that, uh, the computer doesn't shut off in the middle of this presentation, but it's possible, because once the update is done for the server that serves that computer...
A lot of updates.
It will, it will, um, restart all the computers under that server. I think that one's already, no, it, it's not done, because it was still logged on.
Maybe it'll hold on just a little longer.
I hope so. Excuse me. What's that?
We'll have our full-time Director of Technology.
Yeah. Okay. Pardon me? Chill. Would you want a recess, so this is not on the paper?
Um, either that, or we can, um, go to the other items and then, um, come back. Why don't we do that? Um, then, while we're waiting for our computer to wake up to see, um, the performance contract update, item D was, um, a summer and winter millage levy, which Dr. Mensah went over already.
Oh, Tom did step up, didn't he?
Okay. Okay. What, oh.
There we did. We were, um...
We were gonna advance on. We're okay, we're back up, yeah, on the computer, so.
No pressure, we're all watching you. I think it's E. Kurt? Okay.
Since I wasn't here at the meeting that you actually approved, working with me, I wanted to say it's honored, an honor to work with you and to say thank you. Um, and with that, I'll get into what's going on with the performance contract and to give you an update.
You're gonna have to pull the mic up so they can hear you.
Can do that?
Just make sure it's on, on top.
See if that's on.
Top, top button.
There we go.
There we go, all right. Performance contracting update. If that doesn't work, we can do it the old-fashioned way. Um, I'm just gonna go through very briefly, um, kind of a summary of the, the goals of the program, utility costs where they're at now, what we expect to see as far as a potential impact, and kind of show you a status and a timeline. Although you can have many goals in one of these programs, the, probably the top two are usually to proactively strengthen a district's financial position. You've done a lot of work, we want to keep that going in the same direction, and then also to enhance the learning environment while you're doing it. Then, on how, how we're gonna do that, we're looking at increasing the energy efficiency of the facilities and eliminating the wasted utilities, and taking a, and redirecting a portion of the current utilities and that expense, which would likely be about two hundred thousand dollars a year or more, into facility renewals. In other words, you take it away from the utility company, and you put it back into your own facilities. And then also, what we'll be shooting to do is to reduce the repair materials and repair costs that are currently, um, taken each year, and try to eliminate as well, uh, most of the emergency replacements, so you aren't facing that in the future as well. So it's a proactive approach. Um, your current utility costs, Dr. Mensah had run, was kind enough to run a report for us. Um, this has three columns, you have vertically fiscal year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and then, when this report was run, it was run about a month and a half ago, uh, at that time, it was up through part of April, so it didn't quite include all of April. So it gives you an idea that this year isn't quite done yet. But the electric, gas, and water sewer costs were at nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Last year, they crept up to one point one million. This year, they're already at one point two, and that's with about two and a half months left to go. I would expect the main change to be probably for electric during that two months. The natural gas would be minimal. The water sewer change would be minimal for those two months, be some, but the big cost will be electric, which, um, it would not be surprising to see another, um, hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, for the electric there. So, um, that could come in at about one point four million dollars. One of the big questions I thought folks might ask would be, while you took on Inkster High School during, you know, the, this past year, what impact did that have? And in, it is in the total, the one point two, but I broke that out separately, and it's about sixty-seven thousand dollars. So you can have an idea of how much of the nine percent increase, about, uh, two-thirds of that was due to Inkster High School. Utilities, a lot of times, we only forecast about a three percent per year increase, so when you're looking at these double-digit increases, that's enormous. So, really, the goal of this is to take proactive, delve into the utilities and the equipment to see what can be done to curb those. I just graphed those out as well, so you could kind of see how they go. You can see that the natural gas cost was almost, in this case, uh, looks like it was nearly double this year. Most districts faced at least a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in natural gas cost due to the weather alone. So part of that would be due to the weather. Um, if you add in the months remaining, that bar to the right for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen would go up pretty much to the top of the chart, probably at about one point four million. A typical target for one of these programs would be about a twenty percent reduction in utilities. In a highly efficient district, I would expect it to be about fifteen percent. Um, I have seen it as high as thirty. Twenty is pretty common, I wouldn't be surprised to even see it come back at twenty-five. So I think at this point, for an early estimate, at least twenty is probably not a bad target. And as you can see, just from looking at, uh, if you're looking at, uh, a million dollars, uh, twenty percent would be two hundred thousand, so I do expect that we'll be above that mark. We could even be at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in utility savings. So the preliminary estimate, at this point, we're starting out at two hundred thousand dollars a year in utility costs. We'd like to see redirected into facilities. And if you took that out over, uh, fifteen years, what that would able, be able to do and self-fund for you at this point would probably be about three to five million dollars. If you multiply fifteen times two hundred thousand, you're gonna hit the three million dollar mark. The extra money would come in from any redirected, um, repair expenses. So I kind of expect that's where we'll, where we'll come back. Wanted to show you briefly where we are in the timeline. Um, right now, you had had one vendor come through. What we're doing is, we had talked with three other vendors, and we have two of those now that were interested in working with the district, and they're coming through, kind of getting caught up. They're doing their own preliminary reviews, and as soon as they're done with those, which should be in the next week, um, they'll be reporting back to myself and the district, we'll be talking with them, and then we'll be reporting back, we'll have several steps where we report back to the Board, so you have not only a chance to ask questions and see where things are, but also have your say in what you want done, and if you want anything done. So it's really, um, you're the ones in control. After that preliminary review, we'll be back in mid-July. I think your meeting is the fourteenth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and what we'll be doing is, we'll be showing what the vendors came up with to refine that a little bit further, that dollar range. We'll also be, um, answering questions, talking about the types of improvements that would be made, and also getting your approval to put together an RFP and release that either in July or August.
Okay.
The, uh, one of the questions usually comes up is, in this process, when does the district incur expenses? You know, especially from these vendors, they're gonna be putting together very extensive audits of the buildings, and the answer is, not until you decide to go all the way through. So we wanna, so you could get all the way to the end of the process ultimately, and if the district, for whatever reason, it doesn't matter, chose not to move forward, you would not owe any of the vendors anything. Just going through the timeline again, after the, uh, in July and August, we're gonna be refining the project and putting out the RFP. We'd have proposal submissions in early September. Those will be, um, independently reviewed by my firm. Um, we'll also do vendor interviews and selection recommendation and final scope, and we'll be coming... be coming back to the board following that. Each of the dark or bolded fonts there, following that, you'll see an asterisk in the timeline. That means we'd be coming back to the board. So we'll be reporting to you in July, asking for your authorization to release an RFP this summer. Then we'd be coming back to you with, after we've reviewed and interviewed everybody and looked at the proposals, we'd be coming back to you with the recommendations of what we think would be the best for the district. And then, we'll also be going into contract review after that and ask for your, again, your permission for bid authorization for financing, go out and secure financing, get bids for that. And then lastly, come back, and we'd have the final contract and financing execution. And then construction, that'd be probably late October or November, and then the construction would begin most likely in January or February. Usually takes about six to 12 months, depending on what level of work is done. Oop, back up one. There we go. This is the typical, I've just got a couple of slides left. This is the typical review process, and I apologize for, I should've put some white font there instead of the black. But you've got, if you look at the white bar, you've got the request for proposal, then you have the audit and proposal stage, you have the contract, you have the measurement and verification and the guarantee. And of that process, there's really only two stages that are typically reviewed at all in the Michigan process through our legislation. And generally, you'd have your district legal counsel review the contract, and then they would come back to you and say, yes, the contract's in order. What most people don't realize is that the, the legal review is not the entire, generally of the entire, what would be typically be about a 300-page contract. It's typically of the terms and conditions, which constitute 20 to 30 pages of that contract. The reason that we're involved is we come through and we work not only with the RFP wording to get better bids, but we work with the data development, the assumptions, the calculations, the cash flows, all the specifications for equipment, the vendor selection. We do also help negotiate and look over the entire contract, and then we work on the measurement, verification, and guarantee wording as well. So in, in the process, when we're involved, it's covered from the beginning to end. So that really reduced, dramatically reduces a district's financial risk. We, we review the whole process and mitigate those financial risks throughout the project. We do not replace the legal review, but we do supplement it. So we both review that. Last couple of slides. In this process, we're securing vendor participation, which we've already done and started that, the RFP development, as well as baselines. There's quite a few other steps in here. I tried to keep it at a high level. We do the proposal evaluations, the interviews, and assist with the selection. We also are involved in detailed audit reviews. The audit is the work the vendors do, looking through all the facilities, and we look through all the data that they put together and gather. So we do an engineering review of those proposals. We also assist in the final scope selection to see what equipment really should be in the project and not in the project, to get the most value for the district. M and B stands for measurement and verification. That's how the project is going to be measured after it's installed, to show that the savings are there, as well as the costs, not only for that, but for the whole project. We do contract reviews and negotiations, and then as well, we do an independent review of the first annual savings report produced by the vendor one year post-project. She'll be seeing a little bit of us. The whole, a whole idea of this, of our work in it really is to get you the best project, to have sound financials in line with your goals, and to have no surprises, really to have the best overall total impact for the project and the return for the money that's invested. And then, the best terms within the contracts themselves. And then lastly, we'd like to see that you're, a good return on investment for choosing us to work with you. We'd like to see at least three to five times our fees in what we've saved you. Our first project in the state was Yale Public Schools, and our return to them was almost 20-fold from what our fees were. That's it. So, are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions. You know, at your first slide, you showed the projected cost of utility costs, and then I noticed your timeline. You're projecting roughly about 1.4 million for utility costs this year. By the time your timeline gets going, we're gonna be getting to the heart of the winter again, where we're gonna incur a lot of them heavy costs if we get a winter like we did last year, which nobody knows what we're gonna get. It could be short sleeves and, you know, but it's Michigan. So wouldn't it be beneficial to start, where we can start implementing and see some of these savings hopefully before winter hits?
The answer, the short answer to that is yes. The, the longer answer is, it, it's quite an extensive process to get through, looking at the, the current energy costs, which means gathering data on usually three years of energy history, so we're not basing it just on one year. You wouldn't want to forecast for the next 15 years based just on last winter.
Right. I understand that.
But, but to answer your question, to get through that process, to get through the, it usually takes about a month to get the vendor's preliminary interview and review done at the facilities. Then for them to do development work and to do those detailed audits usually takes at least two more months. So we'd be looking at about the beginning of September for their bids to come back. And then, it takes about 30 days to, two weeks within that 30-day window to analyze all of the bids. We'd be analyzing about three, 300-page proposals, looking at all the details in those, interview the vendors, make a selection recommendation, negotiate the final scope, and bring that back to the board. And then, the next step, it usually takes at least another 30 days, which is getting the legal review done and lining up the financing for that. So once we, all that's done and it's signed, the vendor usually takes about 30 days after that to actually start construction. They're doing mobilization. So the very earliest this could probably take place would be probably December, getting the vendor going. If we can move that fast, that would be awesome.
I mean, I'm just looking at the numbers there, and you've got three years of proposed utility costs, and I don't see any of them going down.
No. You know, the gathering, I'm sorry.
Anticipate the next year is even gonna be higher, so I'm looking at, if we can get the ball rolling and potentially capture some of them savings is what I'm looking at. I mean, this is something we've been talking about for a while, and, you know, we're losing out on the opportunity to save the money.
I think there's a couple ways that we could impact this winter. First of all is to keep the project moving as fast as we can, but this, gathering this data for the three years, that was running, you know, a, a computer printout of the expenses from a payable standpoint, which is easy. What, what we actually have to do is go back and get the individual utility bills and look at the actual energy units and consumption and the individual charges that you were charged. Some of those we can impact, some we cannot. It takes that level of detail, so it means gathering, on top of the normal work that the payables does, it means going back and making copies of records for three years of utility bills, which is very time-consuming. The vendors then have to take all that data and input it. So it's, it is, I realize it's a bit of a timely process, time-consuming process. The only way to really do it faster than that would be to not have this type of competitive bid and to negotiate something with one vendor only. And I don't generally recommend that. The project that we just came off of, our very first one, which was with Yale, we've done several since then, they had one bid. We negotiated it, took it back out to bid, and are implementing the same process with bidding it that we're doing here. We took a $1.7 million project and brought it in at $1 million. So there was a huge benefit to that competitive bid process. Your, your points noted. We want, we definitely want to impact that. The other thing, as quickly as we can, the other thing that we can do, and that I did with grant schools, which was very beneficial, is, is we got the detailed energy consumption, not just the costs, but the energy units, we tracked that and, and looked at changes in each building year by year by year. And what we did is, we noticed anomalies in that. Why did this jump up for the summer? Why did that go down here? And what we found was, through that discussion, was opportunities to change how they did different programs. Something in the evening, sometimes summer school, they were able to shift things between different wings or different buildings, where they could, the district could better control the costs versus heating or cooling the whole building. They were doing, they did it where they could just control the wing or the smallest portion possible, and that helped control costs immediately, even before we got to the changing the equipment.
Madam Chair, I had a couple of, one was a comment in regards to this.
Go ahead, Ms. Funderbur.
Here, not to bring up a, a touchy subject, but I'm wondering, too, we used to have an energy manager, and I'm just looking at the jump from 2012 to 2013. I'm just wondering how much of that, the monitoring that our energy manager helped us with really kind of is contributed into the numbers that we're seeing now? But then also, too, with this whole new electronic devices, people charging, and I'm thinking that we're probably incurring quite a bit of electrical costs in, in that area as well. Which goes to a question in regards to construction times. You said that it, that you anticipate that if we have the green light on everything, that we'd be starting in February, and that it would be six to 12 months. How much disruption to our everyday school is it gonna be? I mean, are we talking about a huge inconvenience for our, our students and our staff, or is it gonna be very minimal? Are we talking about having the repairs done in the evening as opposed to in the daytime? So what is that gonna look like?
That's an excellent, actually, two excellent questions, and I'll address the latter first, if I may.
Okay.
Regarding the timing, these vendors are used to doing these projects. Yes, they do do work during the summer, like any construction project, but they also are very used to doing work throughout the school year. So there's usually only a small amount of equipment that has to be done in the summertime. The rest of it would be done during the school year without interruption at all to any of the class schedules. They realize that instruction is paramount, and so they do things like lighting on second shift. They'll do it in stages where they'll do so many rooms a night, they'll tear them down, they'll change it, then they have to do cleanup because it has to be back in perfect order the next morning. And so they'll do it in stages like that. Any other work, like building controls, a lot of times they'll get things installed and then cut it over on extended weekends and holidays and, and that type of work.
Okay.
And I know usually the, one of the biggest savings is lighting in any district. The lighting in Romulus schools is several generations behind where current lighting standard, I shouldn't say standards, but technology is at. And there's, there'll be a very large impact there. That's one of the easier ones for them to install, and they usually install that first. So I would see that impact happening at the very beginning of the project and having an impact right away.
Okay.
Your second question, though, you also asked, which was about, you used to have
An energy manager.
An energy manager, and I know the, the firm, I'm familiar with the firm that had contracted with the district before to do that, and they're very successful at that. When, when you have that type of program, whether you're doing it yourself or having someone help you, and it's, it's called a behavioral program, you're monitoring what people are doing. Our lights getting turned off, our thermostats being set back and all those things. The tighter you watch things and manage things, the better you do. And I like to actually see two types of programs. Where, performance contracts generally talks about a technology program. You'll be putting in occupancy sensors and things that will automatically shut things off, so you're not relying on people to always do it. But those might shut off in 10 or 15 minutes. If you walk out of a room and you shut it off immediately, that's further savings. And so we try to train people as well to, to do that. We, we usually recommend that districts embark on both types of programs, and I would not be surprised to see the vendors propose a twofold approach, not only technology improvements, but also a wraparound program to train people to, to better manage that as well, so you get the most out of your investment.
Okay. Thank you.
Good, good question.
Any other questions?
For $200,000 savings in utilities, does that include deducting for the bond debt, the interest and stuff that we'd be paying?
The two, that's a good question. The $200,000 would be the raw savings off of, as you can see, let's just say it was that your utility costs were roughly a million dollars, so just for rounding purposes, 20%, $200,000. That's, would be, the $200,000 would be what would be available to pay that debt service. So ideally, what, what I would foresee in this type of program is that you would want, you can run the program two ways. One would be to get as much equipment as you can at no cost, you know, with it fully funded. The other would be to have a little bit of a hybrid where you have a cushion, so there's some contribution back to, to the bottom line of the district, to your general fund, and you don't spend all of it on paying off the debt. I prefer the, the latter, because I like to see some cushion. The weather can change, vendor's calculations aren't perfect, but we like to see them very tight, but I still like to see a cushion there as well. So what we can do is work with the administration and Dr. Mensah to see what level, what's the balancing point? How much do you want to see coming back? Very good question.
Anything else?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
The next item is Dr. Mensah again with the summer and winter millage levy. We need a motion.
And the next few motions are all in regards to what we went over in our study session and then what we, what Dr. Mensah went over with us tonight, so.
For taxation.
Through the taxation here, I'm right.
You ready, Madam Chair?
Yes, I am.
All right, we're doing the 14, 15.
The summer and winter millage levy for 2014, 15.
All right. Madam Chair, may I move the Board of Education to adopt the summer and winter millage levy for 2014, 2015 tax collection. Collection as presented.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Buckley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, 5-1. Okay, the next item is the revised 2013, 14 general fund budget approval.
Madam Chair, move the Board of Education to accept the Director of Business and Operations recommendation to adopt the revised 2013, 2014 general fund budget.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Funderbur. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, 5-1. Okay, the next item is the 2014, 15 general fund budget approval.
Madam Chair, move the Board of Education to accept the Director of Business and Operations recommendation to adopt the 2014, 2015 general fund budget.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Funderbur, and this 2014, 15 budget is aligned with the debt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
5-1, motion carries. Next item is approval of revised two-year deficit elimination plan.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education accept the Director of Business and Operations recommendation to approve the revised two-year deficit elimination plan as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
Motion made by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Funderbur. Discussion, Mr. Kudrick.
Question, this, this revised debt elimination plan, does it supersede the other plans that were already presented?
Yeah, based on our budget changes, I believe. Right, Dr. Mensah?
Actually, this is just a revision to the earlier debt that we filed with the state. We are required to update this plan when we update our budget.
Okay.
That's, that is the actual 2013, 2014 budget. That was the, the baseline against which the debt was made. But then, we have a actual history now. We've run almost eleven months, so we have to update the 2013, 14 budget with the actual numbers and our projection to June 30. And once you do that, you have to update the, the debt.
Okay. My question is, is back in September and October and November, there was questions that came down from the states and, you know, questionnaires and programs and positions that were on the debt that was sent to the state for elimination. Are them positions and everything, the ones that have Are them positions and everything that ones that have to be implemented in 14, 15 still gonna be on here, or they supersede that now they're safe?
Uh, no, the, the, the new questionnaire, there's a new questionnaire attached to the 2015 debt, okay? And it has to, uh, include those, uh, those items that have already taken place, and those items that are going to take place. And, uh, I don't have a copy of it right here, but, uh, most of the, uh, items listed on the original debt have actually been implemented. There are very few items left to be implemented.
What, what has to be implemented?
Uh, the main item that was partially implemented was in adult education.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, the remainder of that, which is the, uh, community high school, that, that is one big item. Uh, then, uh, the service contracts, virtually all of them went into effect, but some went in later than expected. So those are some of the changes. Uh, the only addition, uh, is the curriculum director, which we added. So apart from that, most of the items listed originally have been implemented.
Okay, there was a position on there for an administrator elimination, and that was, that was even sent to the state and given to us by the current administration, I'm not correct, sorry about correction, the prior administration, that it was listed on there as an administration elimination of a position. Where is that at?
Now, whi- which specific position is that?
Uh, I think a lot of people assumed, I could be wrong, but I, I think they were assuming it was gonna be a high school assistant principal. Now that was on there, supposed to be on there, and I do believe if I correct, I'm correct, I think it was October 25th.
But I, it was, it had been taken.
It was never taken off.
That's what I was asking, that was my question at the last, um, at our special meeting for the, the study session, was the administrator that you were taking off, is that for the high school, or was that the administrator for community high?
No, community high was separate, 'cause community high had everything involved, 'cause everybody that was, the way I was told, everything on the community high was, everybody was community high. And from what I understand, I mean, the, the, what the title and everything, wasn't considered an administrator over there, really. So where's that position at?
Can I address the board?
Go ahead.
It's my understanding that the, the principal position, the assistant principal position that was originally scheduled to be cut 13, 14, was taken off the DEP, replaced with an administrator, actually two administrator reductions. The way the DEP creates admini- or identifies or labels administration, it's the community high school principal and the community high school secretary. So there were, there are two.
That was never, that was never addressed or related that way, that community high would calculate, would take the, the administrator position over. I don't ever remember anybody ever saying, if we took community high, that would take the spot of the administrator. Until now.
I remember them saying it, but I didn't hear.
I never, I don't ever recall that being, I could be wrong, but I don't ever recall that ever being in a conversation that community high would count as the administrator. But I mean, I don't, I don't recall it, I mean, I said I could be wrong.
My, my recollection is that when we hired the assistant principal, it was put back, that position was pu- was restored, right? It was like eliminated from the DEP.
Then it was restored because of the additional students that we had coming in from.
From Inkster.
Right. Because our numbers were going back up.
So right now, the DEP is not reflecting that cut.
And is, is that, is that principal position budgeted for next year for 14, 15?
Which one?
The assistant.
The assistant principal at the high school.
Well, I have to look into it, but basically, wha- what the DEP is showing is the, uh, in 241, is the community high school principal and the secretary. They are both out of two, uh, 241.
Okay, so if you could give us the numbers that we had on community high, and the way I was, the way I understood, that the number, the number that was being taken out of the DEP included everybody. The pro, I mean, I'm, the head of community high, secretary, staff, that community, that counted everything. At no time that, that was on the DEP, and then there was also a line item for an administrator elimination. So are we double dipping there? I know you weren't here, and that's why I'm asking, 'cause we have community high as one number, then we had an administrator that further down the list as a number to be eliminated, and now we're getting told. I'm hearing that community high counted that administrator, so I'm, I'm puzzled.
Well, the, the way the DEP is set up is that you have one position, and any change, uh, you have to reflect in the debt.
Right, but how many times can you put a position, a person's, a position on the DEP as an elimination, distract, distract? Can you put that position twice and take it out?
No, you cannot.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. It's the way I'm getting, the way I'm reading, understand it, and the way I'm getting the information, we're counting it twice. I mean, I don't recall ever saying that we were putting them back in, I don't recall ever saying that, or hearing that community high counted as the administrator, even back in October last year, folks. Like I said, I could be wrong, okay? But I don't recall it ever, and I, I mean, if it was, I'd like to see the minutes on it where it showed that, because I don't recall that ever.
Well, the, the, all the, the administrators and their secretaries come out of 241, they, they are charged 241. So, uh, the principal for community high and the secretary had to come out of, uh, 241, which is the, uh, administrative, school administration.
So what, so you're asking if that principal is in here or out?
Right.
And that principal is, is still a position in the district. It was my understanding that, that the board decided to restore that position, so it was placed back into the 13, 14 budget, which also carries into the 14, 15 budget. However, in 14, 15, we did have a reduction of two administrative positions, one of them being the community high principal and one of them being a secretary. So if.
But.
But what I hear you saying, Mr. Kudrick, is that it's not your understanding that that was approved by the board?
My understa- my, my understanding is, I never heard the connection of saying community high when they were on the debt, that community high would count as the administrator. Now, the whole time though, even when we came up and talked about elimination of it, and we've given the opportunity to community high to come back with a plan that hopefully could save their positions, if they can come up with one, now I'm hearing that them positions counted as an administrator. I don't recall, uh, saying, go ahead and let's keep it on there. I mean, I know there was talk that they had more people, and we also had the reduction of, uh, or the, you know, the departure, sudden departure of a principal, so there was one assistant principal over there doing it, we had an interim principal over there, so that's kind of where that went. Um, I was under the understanding that that position was only gonna be there for this year. That's how I understood, perceived it. I mean, I could be wrong, but I mean, that's the way I understood.
The way I understood it is that we restored the position because of the Inkster students and the pos- what we had going on with the high school, and that we can talk about if we're going to keep it, or if we're gonna look at it again, or what we're gonna do.
Do we have the board notes from that? Can we talk about that? Okay, can we look at that?
'Cause I know we restored the position.
Is there a way we can get a copy of the board minutes?
So I could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can look.
But I guess what we need to decide, if we need to decide if we're gonna keep that position, is it in here?
The position is, is in.
Still in there.
Still in there.
So the position is in here, so I guess.
We need to find out if it was back there, if it was voted on by a majority, if that position was gonna be carried over, or it was just a one-time deal, deal that we just filled it for that period, or what? Because I mean, honestly, I don't recall ever voting on it, I could be wrong.
We voted on it, so I'm thinking it probably.
I know we voted on the hiring of the individual.
Thinking it probably, the discussion probably moved it somewhere around November. So that was around the time this was.
I mean, I, like I said, I could be wrong, but I mean, that's my question.
Uh, Mr. Kudrick, if I understood correctly, you're saying that we took off the wrong position?
No, I never said you took off the wrong position. I says, well, my question was, back in October of last year, there was a position listed as an administrator. At no time that I recall anybody saying that community high, principal, director, however we wanna classify him, was gonna be considered that administrator until today. So either some communication never got forward or spoken about, or the rules changed. But I don't recall that, that community high would ever be considered, you know, what budget line they come out of?
241.
That part, that part really doesn't affect me. The thing is, it was on the debt, that community high, and that was a dollar amount. So we're putting the community high in there, then we also had an administrator on there. So what I'm asking is, why are we having all the community high on there and then having it listed down as an administrator? Because there was a reduction of an administrator.
So you're saying that it, you see it as being, having been counted twice as opposed to once?
Well, fir- well, that's one thing, based on the information I've just received.
Yeah.
So then the other thing is, I don't recall it ever, the board ever voting on as a majority that to keep that position in there, so.
Well, I, I, I do remember that we.
Well, I mean, I could be wrong, I mean, I mean.
And I think that was, in my understanding, because I was at that time facilitating the, the deficit elimination plan creation submission from the state, it was my understanding that that action of reinstatement meant that the board was keeping that position. So if that was done in error, I certainly apologize for that, um, but we've budgeted based on that assumption.
Because there was a, there was a debt, there was a debt, uh, for July.
Yep.
And then one in September, and then there was one in November.
Right.
Look in November?
I did look in November.
Around like the 18th or so.
And there was a, a 25 question.
I have my approval letter, the approval, the debt was on 11/21.
There was like a 25 page or a 25.
They're all that long. They're all 20 some pages.
And then it had it on there as an administrator, and community high was listed down there too, so.
All right, we can eliminate an administrator at the high school?
Well, it's, it's an elimination of an administrator, but that's what I was trying to figure out here.
My understanding is when we approved the position, for them to re- reinstate that assistant principal, it went back, it came out of the DEP. It had to, because it changed, it had to, because you had to change your budget.
Yeah, because you had to.
You had the budget for the position.
To the state.
And as long as the position was filled, it stayed in the budget. So what, we're gonna copy those minutes, so? So I'm looking for my debt paper. It's September. But in the meantime, in the meantime.
Right.
Okay, so right now, we have a, a motion by Ms. Buckley, supported by Ms. Funderberg, to approve this deficit elimination plan, so that it's aligned, so that the budget is aligned with the debt. So I guess we need to vote on this, and then once we get the answers that we need, we can, this can be revised.
Right.
Sorry.
Because there's a, a deadline on this as well, is there not, Dr. Mensah, in regards to when we have to resubmit this, the revisions? What's the deadline?
Uh, I think it has to be before, uh, July 1st.
All right, so I guess we will need to vote on this now first to move on.
Yes.
So a motion by Ms. Buckley, supported by Ms. Funderberg, for approval of the revised two-year deficit elimination plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four, whoopsie, four, two. Motion passes. Okay, the next item is the state aid note. Need a motion, uh, to prove the borrowing of the un-stated notes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. Move the Board of Education approve the borrowing not to exceed $9 million in state aid notes for the 2014, 2015 fiscal year.
Support.
Questions?
Discussion.
Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Ms. Buckley, discussion, Mrs. Crowe, and then Mr. Kudrick. Okay, I thought we got 11 state aid payments, so I took the 32 million annual budget, I divided it by 12, it's 2.7 million. Why would we borrow more than 2.7 million? We're trying to eliminate a budget deficit, and yet we're wanting to take on more debt.
We're not borrowing that million.
Actually, uh, this is an advance, uh, against the state aid.
But we get 11 state aid payments, right?
Yes, but.
So there's only one that we're missing.
Yeah, but it depends upon the time that the state aid, uh, revenue start flowing in.
Well, even if you did two months out, you'd only be talking 5.4 million, nothing like 9 million.
Well.
When I look at our overall budget, this is, it's a third.
I, I think the nine.
It means you can go up too.
I think the 9 million is simply, uh, the, the, the maximum estimate. Uh, for the current year, the borrowing was 7 million. Uh, and as I said, it's just an advance against the state aid. If we had, uh, reserves or ba- a huge balance in the general fund, we wouldn't need to do that. Or if you collected all our taxes, uh, earlier, uh, the need to do this will be very, very much minimized. So it is not, uh, because we don't have the money. We have the money coming in, but at a different rate than, uh, the rate at which we use, uh, the, the money.
Not in time to pay the bills that we need to pay.
Did we pay back the 7 million we borrowed last year?
Yes, we have to. That's it, yes.
It's a requirement of.
Well, why would we need more than we used last year when our budget's going down?
I, I think, uh, uh, this calculation, uh, was done by the, uh, the general law firm.
Right.
I think they just want to be, uh, on the safe side, so that, uh, they don't have to, uh, fall short in case things turn very, very badly for us. Uh, so the 9 million, I don't think we're going to borrow 9 million, to be honest with you.
Dr. Mensah. Wait, I'm sorry, were you finished with your questions, Ms. Funderberg?
Yes, but, but I just want people to understand, if I won't know it, because I think that, not that we need to, don't need to do it, but I don't think we need such a high volume. Okay, Mr. Kudrick was next, then Ms. Funderberg, Mr. Kudrick?
I think I've got my question answered, actually, 'cause, uh, Ms. Crowe mentioned about how much we borrowed last year, that was gonna be my question.
Dr. Mensah?
Yeah.
Oh, Ms. Funderberg. The 9 million, would it be safe to say that, um, one of the reasons why this factor, this number is higher is because of our debt levy going up to the 8.25?
No, uh, th- th- there are two separate, uh, uh, types of borrowing.
Okay.
Uh, we, we get about 21, 22 million from the state in, in the level installment. So this is all for that aid coming in. It has nothing to do with the debt service. The debt service is totally separate. We borrow from a different fund. This, this one is from the, uh, Municipal Finance Authority. Okay, so, uh, the risk of default i- is almost not a system, because the state can always take our aid and do whatever they need to take out before they even give it to us. Okay, so, uh, e- 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 even if you borrow. Okay, so, uh, e- e- even if you borrow nine million, even if you borrow nine million, uh, it will be against twenty-one or twenty-two million. Okay, which the state will take their share out of it before they give it to us.
Okay.
So the, the, the fear of default is really, is really non-existent.
So it's going to come out of the future state aid payment?
Yes, it's just an advance against it. We are taking an advance from the state against the money they are going to give us. And in reality, they take it out of our state aid.
And I guess that, and I know I've mentioned this before, but I really think that, um, as we begin to move forward and rebuild, um, central office in our district, one of the things that we need to really start having conversations about is, is rebuilding our fund equity, because at one point, we were able to, um, not have to take out these loans. And so as we build our fund equity, then this won't even be an issue any longer. So I think that, um, as we begin to move forward, if we could start having discussions in regard on how are we going to rebuild that fund equity so that we're not having to borrow? Because I do understand that the, the borrowing is so that we can make payroll in the fall, because we won't get paid by the state until late October. And so, um, you know, I'd rather say yes tonight than to have an angry mob of employees sitting in the boardroom, um, using explicative language because they are not getting their paychecks. And so.
We have taken a step, though, in not borrowing by changing our tax collection.
Yeah.
Um, effective in the summer of twenty fifteen.
Yeah, so that's.
So we, we're in the process of working with the city on that and advertising and getting it out there to the public, but we've already approved a summer tax collection.
Right.
Which is about. Which will go into effect the summer of twenty fifteen. And that's a summer and a winter collected together, right? Right. It's not an increase, it's just all, all, just the school portion of our tax bill will be collected in the summer of twenty fifteen versus a split of summer and winter.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Buckley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four-two. Okay, I don't know if you guys want to interject or anything, but, uh, we already did the. I mean.
This is just coming back from what the state's approved now, right?
That's correct.
We've already, we've already talked about it, done it.
Okay, well then. I will entertain a motion then.
Madam Chair, move the Board of Education to accept the Director of Human Resources's recommendation to enter into a food service contract with Chartwell School Dining Services for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, per the district's food service request for proposals as approved by the Michigan Department of Education on June eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by Mrs. Funderburgh. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five-one.
I just want to give a little update to the board. Chartwell's is here tonight, Mike and Kathy, thank you very much for coming. Um, if the board has any specific questions of them tonight, they're here. Um, we've been working behind the scenes, um, wanting to, to expedite the, the hiring process. Um, they are hosting on Wednesday, is it still scheduled for Wednesday? Um, they're scheduling a, um, hiring fair, if you will, for existing employees, so that we can get them, you know, interviewing and processing and all of that stuff. So hopefully, um, we can move forward very quickly with that and put some, put some lines with these.
All right, the next item on our agenda is communications and expressions from the public. Okay, I don't see anything. Next item is questions and concerns for you, for Mr. Kudrick?
Not this time, Madam Chair.
Ms. Bowles?
Not at this time.
Ms. Crowe?
Nothing.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes, I have one thing for the administration. Could you please make sure we have a communication to the community and our parents regarding our new high school principal? I think this would be something that we need to put out in the community, so the parents would know too, when the kids are coming back, so. Yeah, we could do, I would, yeah, a mobile call or a letter out to all the parents, whatever Chico would do, but. But we just, you know, just so we could, I just want to get it out there that we have a new principal and, you know, because I got, we probably have a lot of questions about when it's going to fill that spot, so.
I'm sorry, I just had a question. I just wanted to know, what measures have we taken, or will we be taking to, may have already? I haven't heard of anything yet, though, uh, to inform the public about the combination of the two taxes together, the summer tax. Yeah, they have, since, are we going to resend out more information, or?
It's time for the tax bill too.
We're putting it with the tax bills, and they're going to be doing, I believe, with the water, is it the same market plan that we had before?
Okay, it is.
Okay.
Water bill, the tax statement.
Right, and then there's going to be flyers, I believe, available.
It'll have an.
A different.
We actually included a flyer in with the summer tax bill. It was, it was easier for us to get the full message across. We were limited on space, if there was even going to be any available on the tax bill. So fortunately, the city was able to leverage their very low-cost printer for us and fold that, that full announcement explaining why they're doing it, how it's not a tax increase, it's, we just want them to be able to prepare, prepare, prepare for next July of two thousand fifteen. And we'll continue on with the full marketing plan, we'll get it up on the website, we'll do some press releases. We kind of wanted that summer, that tax bill to kick off first, so that that's the, kind of the beginning of the, of the campaign.
Um, Ms. Funderburgh, did you have anything?
No. I have nothing, so, um.
Oh, I know what it was.
I said, city, school, community. Oh, city, community.
Yeah, um, we actually had a meeting, uh, last week, Tuesday, um, with the city, and it, it's, it's the beginning, I feel, of, um, rebuilding and recapturing a partnership with the city of Romulus. And we talked about, um, different areas of concern. They are actually in the process of, um, doing a vision for the city. And so, um, some of the things that came up were communication, parks and rec, public safety. And so I'm really rather excited, because we actually get to kind of piggyback off of some of those initiatives that, um, they are going to be undertaking. And I feel like the, the meeting was really a very positive meeting, um, being able to pull the resources that we have and work together, because, you know, I think, um, in, in the past, you know, we've kind of been on, on different spectrums. And so I think this is an opportunity to just really kind of come together as a city, because we're only as strong as our city, but the city is only as strong as its schools, so.
And we had three board members that were on that, I don't know, Mrs. Funderburgh was.
Ms. Bowles.
Yeah, Mr. Kudrick, we're on that committee. All right, I will, nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Kudrick, supported by.
Buckley.
Buckley. Motion to adjourn at seven twenty-five.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
You want to hurry?
Yeah. Six, zero. Meeting is adjourned, seven twenty-five.